Mr. Scott asked about that and we're, I mean, the bottom line, we'll have some unfinished space in the bank building, which is okay. I mean, that leads growth, it's not costing us anything, it's just space that we won't spend a lot of money on developing, I mean, without the county attorney being present. So, I mean, all along through the process, Mr. Estes was well aware that we may have tenants, we may not, and as we plan this building and design, we need to keep that in mind. And he did, he did a wonderful job of doing that. So, it was kind of a, it didn't come as a surprise to design and concept, they were prepared either way, if we were gonna have tenants or if we weren't. So, that was a positive thing from that aspect.
You know, the public's very concerned, obviously, about the crime and so forth. And the people I talked to, their quick answer to this situation is, more policemen. Is that the answer? I mean...
You know, it's, we're gonna get into that in this proposal, but to briefly answer that, is it gonna make it go away? No, I don't think more policemen will make it go away. But if we can, if we can slow the tide, if we can start to stem this, instead of this gradual, and you're gonna see some charts coming up, instead of this stair step thing going up, can we level it off? And if we can level it off, at what point can we get it to start going the other way? You know, and what it will do, what I think it'll really help with is recruitment and retention, I think it'll help with our burnout rates, I think it'll help with response times. I mean, now, if you've got seven cars on the street versus four, the odds of having somebody there to be closer is really important. And when it comes to these shots fired call, I cannot stress to you enough how response time is everything. I mean, the difference of three or four seconds can make the difference of whether we solve this case or whether we don't. Because we got a car driving by the street, somebody hears some shots, I don't know, it was a black SUV, but we just happened to have a patrolman a half a block away, and about that time, a black SUV goes by. You know, those are some things that, that operationally do start to improve.
Appreciate you addressing that, that's a good question, Bob, just because people need to understand that, that, that we can get more police officers, that it is gonna help, and I'm glad you've pinpointed the things, because there is a need, and it still is going to make a big difference, but people need to understand, if we had twenty new police officers, it's still, still a lot of ground to cover, and it's not, if we had fifty new police officers, it's not a guarantee that that's gonna stop crime.
Right, the perfect example is the last situation we had, when the, the shots rang out at the house right after the homicide. I mean, there were seventeen or eighteen policemen within a block of there, and it didn't prevent it from happening, but we caught the van within seconds after that, with the three people that were in the van that allegedly, let me make that clear, did the shooting. So, without that presence, do we know what van that is? That, to me, is a perfect example. So, without any questions, unless you wanna take a little break, we'll jump into this proposal.
Let's take a, let's take a five.
Thank you.
Everybody looks so excited.
How much of the year that guy was, that position was filled at desk, but budgeted for the year? And it's, it's an increased budget year over budget year. And I assume that's, whatever their salary schedule is, you gotta do a quarter percent increase, but you also have, you know, sort of how knowing what's happened to their police force. And, and that's a big deal for me. I thought it was a pretty good size increase, but it's just following their union schedule. And I didn't really pay attention to what the contract ended up being. I thought it was a two and four, but people were on the range just, so it's kind of a volume fall or something increases, instead of two and four, just a couple ranges.
They hide these things, how am I supposed to find them?
Doing it, son, doing it, kid.
What's this jam about you and the Lincoln?
I think Doug, I think Doug has expressed some concern.
Old Ernie Chambers? Ernie Chambers is from, he's been on, in the, with you.
I suggested to him today, the idea of the sirens, but they're, they're been concerned with the state.
He was on for a really long time, I think thirty some years, and then the state decided to do the permits, basically because they wanted to.
They simply removed it.
He sat out for a good term, they came back.
When no one is present.
He has an interesting little thing, he throws letters at God. Or no drinks, he doesn't have a drink. What else do you have?
I just...
He's a, he left his waist in the, right, his little braids.
Make sure you do, like, do. Actually, we can pretty clean all those streets until the third morning.
All right, thanks.
But what, what he wants, is, everybody actually together, and just making decisions, just tell them, they'll, they'll...
I think it's very tricky to hide my cookies. I just happened to spot his over there, and I thought, what?
Good luck.
I hid everybody's.
I found mine, I was looking for it as soon as I came.
I was talking about Nick, that was the other.
Hey, Nick, before you leave, I'd like to talk to you.
Yeah. These are better than my kisses too.
You got that right. You know, I was just curious. Forget your life, let's, let's go ahead and get this going.
Let's go.
Okay.
Time, time.
We're, we're ready.
You ready?
Yes, sir.
Ready. So, this isn't in PowerPoint form, but what I'm gonna do is have Eric kinda keep up with us there and keep it on the overhead, at least so the folks at home can kinda follow along with us. Anyway, this is gonna be a three-year plan, a staffing proposal plan for eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, and just kinda some of the highlights of the executive summary that you're probably all just now starting to review, you know, this is basically gonna serve as our guide at the police department for staffing. If we add additional staffing, where that staffing's gonna be added, you're gonna see as we go through this plan, a replacement schedule for retirements, and kinda currently what we're gonna have to do. We're gonna continue to work diligently to diversify the department and hire the most qualified applicants that we can. And just to kinda highlight some of the things we're going through, I mean, to date this year, we're over three hundred calls to, we refer to them as mental health type calls across the community, whether those are suicidal, or with the, the homes that we now have in town that are housing some of the individuals that are, you know, living in the community as best they can, you know, you know, maybe they don't wanna take their medicine, and that turns into an argument, and so we're getting those calls, which is fine, which is fine, but it has really started to, to add a, a new realm to what we're doing. I mean, we're putting a crisis intervention team in place to try to help stem this off, it's gonna take a while to get that team put together and put in place, but Major Grimshaw is working diligently with that, with Tom Broker, one of the supervisors, to try to find some new access points, I mean, where can we take these people, how can we provide them with some help? But I think it's important that you understand that that's really starting to occupy a lot of our time. And they're, they're serious calls, I mean, they need to be responded to, when you start talking about people wanting to hurt themselves or somebody else. So, that's just become an expanding role and something that we're having to do. I mean, the distribution of, of ICE is really kinda taken over, is one of our hot topics, if you will, I mean, crack cocaine, for the longest time, was probably our most distributed drug, well, it's not anymore, I mean, ICE has taken the replace of that, so, I mean, just in the last two weeks, I'm sorry.
What's, what's the, yeah?
ICE is the base form of methamphetamine. It's the same thing as, if you look at powder cocaine, well, powder cocaine is made from cocaine base, or what they call coca paste, and they add hydrochloride to that paste, and then it becomes cocaine hydrochloride, or powder cocaine. Well, then they reduce that back to cocaine base, because what happens in cocaine hydrochloride is, is you get it in powder form, and then you run out to the nutrient store and get a nosital, or a vitamin B is a nosital, and then you, you cut that in half. In other words, you got an ounce of cocaine, you put a nosital with it, now you got two ounces. But the guy that's buying it from you is getting fifty percent potency, but it happens all the time, I mean, that's what they do. Well, to reduce all that, people figured out, well, we'll just put it back to cocaine base, and it's crack cocaine. Well, now they've done the exact same thing with methamphetamine. They take it from its powder form and convert it back to its original form, or the pure methamphetamine. And what's happened with methamphetamine is the highest, for the same amount of drug, the highest is twelve to fourteen hours versus twenty minutes.
Wow.
So, for the same money, you're getting high for twelve hours versus twenty minutes. And so you can see how this is really starting to take the market by storm. Uh, we've seen, we've seen our heroin really level off or decrease, you know, granted, we took some of it off the street, but I don't think that's the reason. I think there's a, there's a disruption somewhere in the network, and I can't answer that, but there is. I mean, we were having overdoses on a fairly routine basis, and that's kinda really, really tapered off for us the last six or eight months.
When did this ICE thing, when did that become?
I'd say the trend, ICE has been around a long time, but the trend really took over probably two years ago now, and it's at its all-time high now, I mean, there is no doubt. Oh, absolutely. It's the most widely distributed drug, I mean, other than marijuana.
ICE is the most, besides marijuana, ICE is the most widely, in Burlington.
Without a doubt, without a doubt. The last three weeks, the patrol division alone has taken eighty grams of ICE off the street.
Good heavens.
Eighty grams, I mean, that's, what, over three ounces?
Are, I just had to ask this, are, is it the kids?
No, no, not really, it's that early twenties to early thirties, I mean, even up into the forties, but, you know, that, that twenty to twenty-eight or thirty will cover the worst of it.
This stuff is poison.
And for, and for the most part, ICE, what's happened with methamphetamine, we went through this whole conversion of these high-powered labs in Mexico and on the coast, and it was all manufactured methamphetamine. Well, then they come up with the anhydrous method, and that's when you start hearing about all these meth labs, meth labs, and then it went to red phosphorus, meth lab, meth lab, and then the shake and bake, where they were driving around in cars and making just enough meth that they could use themselves. Are they still doing that? Yeah, but very, very little. It's all ICE now, and it's all manufactured, and it's all being distributed. So, we've seen this thing go from manufactured to homemade to manufactured, and that's why, I'm not saying you're not gonna see some labs, you will, but nothing, nothing like we saw in, in recent history. But that's just something that we're dealing with, and it's, it's on the uptick, to say the least, I mean, we're, we're taking a lot of it off the street right now, a lot of it. Price-wise, it's, you know, priced right with crack cocaine, there's really not hardly any difference at all. So, yeah, if you could, Eric, kinda pull that up a little bit, and we'll start to look at, at kinda what's going on in law enforcement in general, and not just in Burlington, Iowa. And not to insult your intelligence, but this paragraph's really important, in 2016, sixteen officers were killed by ambush in the United States, as well as sixty percent of those officers were killed by gunfire. So, of the officer deaths last year, sixty percent of those deaths were by gunfire. So, with the increase of gun violence locally, as depicted on the graph, indicates police officers are more at risk than ever before. Increased manpower levels will reduce response time to critical incidents and for backup units. I think it's really, really important that we talk about that. You got four guys working on the streets, you have a critical incident, or, or god forbid, we have one of those tragedies in our community, another responding unit could be three, four, or five minutes away, and that's, that's, that's too long when somebody really, really needs the help. So, you know, again, is an additional policeman gonna solve all that? No, no, I don't think anybody can say that, but the odds tell ya, through risk management, that our odds would be better. And so when you look at that graph a little bit, from fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, when it talks about carrying weapons, what that means is, is we arrested somebody that had a weapon on them, a firearm, that they couldn't legally have, they didn't have a permit to have it. We encountered them with a gun they weren't supposed to have. And again, through risk management, as you can see, that going from twelve to twenty-six to thirty-seven, that's going the wrong direction. That's a lot of people to encounter with guns they're not supposed to have, a lot of people. And so the shots fired call, in probably in thirteen or fourteen, fourteen for sure, and I'm not, I'm not positive before that, is I got the shift commanders together, and when the dispatcher gets a shots fired call, it could be a firework, it could be a car backfiring, but they enter that, is what's called shots, and so that's how we do our data. And I said, I don't want that call type unless we know for a hundred percent sure that shots were fired. So, when you're looking at this, this isn't a misnomer, we found casings, or we found bullet holes, or we had enough people telling us that somebody had a gun and they were shooting it, that we classified this as a shots fired call. So, again, from fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, you can just see the drastic increase in that. And so, like we talked about earlier, it, it would reduce response times to those kinda calls. And it's, that's something that the POP unit has really, really been good about, when they investigate the shots fired call. The information they've been able to provide to us at these critical incidents has been unbelievable. Without that intelligence information, that patrol division doesn't even have a place to start. But every day, when that POP unit's gathering that information, they're passing that on to patrol division, passing that on, and that's, it's incredibly important. So, I mean, when, again, when we talk about adding personnel, you're talking about the ability to assign people that don't have to answer calls for service and can be on directed patrols.
Chief, on your, on your shots fired reporting, the incident that you had where there was a, was a rolling gun battle, and then those guys shooting up that house, was that one shots fired, or was that, listen, was it multiple shots?
I'd have to go back and look at that particular, but no, it would never be multiple, there wouldn't be multiple CFSs for the same incident, there would be one. But, but some of those call types, it's interesting you bring that up, because it is hard to decipher sometimes, like, when we had the, the shooting, that came in, I know for sure, the homicide came in as shots fired, I know that, but I would have to go back and check, I'm not so sure that second one didn't come in as, like, suspicious, you know, I just, something in my mind, I remember that, that some of these that should be shots fired maybe weren't. You know what I mean? So, it's interesting.
That's what I wanted, that's what I wanted to point out, there's a lot more gunplay than what shows in just the shots fired.
Yeah, there's no question, no question.
And that's, and that's a huge increase from what the his, history of this community.
Yeah, and the reason I use this data, again, is this, this is something I know, these numbers I know are very, very accurate. And it's just because three or four years ago, like I said, we decided to go, if you're gonna use this call type, here's a criteria you're gonna use, and if not, you need to change that call type to something else. So, little backdrop on that, as an officer safety perspective. And then the first paragraph of the next page, page three, it talks a little bit about what has been kind of a topic of discussion, as well as, as our detective division, with three detectives. Kinda when we have a critical incident, every detective available, or any unit available for that matter, is gonna respond, but we're gonna assign those detectives, the DCI, everybody we have, for the first forty-eight hours. I mean, we know in these incidents, that first forty-eight hours is extremely critical, extremely critical. And so, but then that doesn't leave anybody else to service everything else that's going on, because I, in this document, I'm referring to critical incidents. I mean, at the same time, they got burglaries to investigate, they got sex assaults to investigate, they got child porn on the internet to investigate, and so with that said, if we can add somebody back to CID, I'm thinking more of this in terms of a team rotation, all hands on deck at the first twenty-four, forty-eight hours of a critical incident, then after that, you two are gonna be assigned to this homicide. Now, you two need to go back and start working on all these other things. And then if we have another critical incident, we just flip-flop that. Now, you two are assigned, and if the first forty-eight hours have passed, and the DCI is off to doing something else, you two need to start doing these other things that need done too. So, I think it would really help burnout again, I mean, from just all the constant callouts. I mean, granted, a critical incident, that callout is something different, that's always gonna require everybody we have. But what I'm referring to is, is we got this sex assault victim at the hospital at two o'clock in the morning that needs a rape kit done. Well, a detective's gonna do that, he's gonna have to go get out of bed and go do what needs to be done. So, there's all these other callouts that are going on at the same time, well, if you can divide that by four, then by three, there's an obvious reduction on how many times that, that you work nine or ten hours, and at two in the morning, you get up, and at eight in the morning, you're expected to be back on the job. So, as, as we move through this, this policing model, and talk about trying to reduce some of these, crime in general, or these violent events, it's kinda, what we're gonna try to do with these squads is more what we've done with the POP unit, and more of an intelligence-led policing model. I mean, if you have four or five cars, now all they can do is keep up with the CFSs. But let's just say for a minute, we, we had squads of six, which our forty-three will do that, we can get what we need to get sixes, but let's just say for a second, we could add somebody to each squad, four people. Well, now, one person a day, you can have them directed patrols, if you're having trouble in an area, you, let's say we has a couple fights after school, you can direct them to that, so we don't have any more fights, that leads into somebody getting shot, we can work on that. Or we've had a rash of burglaries, that I don't have anybody to assign, well, now I do, I have a patrolman, I can go, hey, we just had ten burglaries the last two weeks in this neighborhood, get over there in that neighborhood, and let's see if we can, you know, put a stop to this. So, there's just so many things we can do with this one extra policeman on a squad. And so then I thought it was important, well, if we could do that, and we had another overlap shift to work with the POP unit, I thought it was important, we need to talk about these calls for service. And when do we have our maximum calls for service? And for the most part, we have a little uptick at ten and eleven, but for the most part, between the hours of three, in the afternoon, midnight, is by far, by far, our highest call volume. And what this isn't showing you is our incidents, the calls that actually turn into something, this chart would even be more of a bell curve for those hours, without a doubt. So, when we start talking about an overlap shift, if that's a possibility, eventually, this is how we would utilize that, that overlap shift. I mean, we would get them there during these high call volumes, again, to free up people to do proactive policing. And proactive policing is something that we haven't been able to do in this community for recent history that I'm aware of. And so, you know, you ask me, what kinda difference would this make? Some of this is uncharted waters, because we've never had the ability to do it. But if there's a patrol car in your neighborhood, and he's there for eight hours, off and on, it ha, doesn't it have to serve as a deterrent? I think it does. I mean, to a degree, it has to serve as a deterrent. And something else that's kinda troubling at times for me, are a lot of our neighborhoods that we never have any trouble in. I mean, those neighborhoods need patrol too, you know, those people need to feel secure, but when you're running calls for service, they don't get there. So, this is just kinda, this, to get back on track here, this just kinda gives you an indication of, of where our call, call loads are at, and what we could possibly do if we added the personnel to the squads. So, this next sheet of information, I, I did some research on the BJS, or the Bureau of Justice Statistics, on kinda what's the national averages, what's the national averages per thousand residents as to how many policemen you should have? Well, and you can kinda see where, I talked to Jason at Grow Greater, and the best number he could give me was twenty-five, seven, twenty-five, and you can look, that puts us almost exactly in between one point eight and two point oh officers per thousand. So, if we split the difference with that, that would give us forty-nine officers, and it was amazing that, that after I looked at the squads, and trying to add one to the squad, and then two to an overlap shift, it's six, and I got to digging on the statistics, and it almost worked out, almost exact, 'cause we have forty-three, six more, it's forty-nine, and according to this, forty-nine is where we need to be. But, with that said, I wanna make it very, very clear that that is an average, that is statistical data that's just average. And if you read my last paragraph on page four, that it, this should not, by any way, shape, or form, be the sole decision-maker in what we're trying to accomplish here. I just think, and I've kinda learned this from Mr. Frenow, there's times when you do comparables, to just put something in a perspective, or put something in a context that's far bigger than us. But is that, is this what we should base our decision on? No, but it does give you an idea of what's going on across the country. I thought that was important. So, on page five, I've kinda put this in a matrix, kinda took it out of, of paragraph form, and, and tried to put it into a matrix, so we could get a little bit of a grasp on where we're at and where we wanna be. And in FY seventeen, the retirement you see there is Officer Corrick, and then the other resignations are the ones that we've talked about, the Evidence Tech, and then Officer Carlson, and, and Officer Largier still, an assumption, she's been accepted at the FBI, but there's still quite the process she has to go through, but, I mean, things look pretty positive for her at this time, you know, I'm not saying she can't change her mind, but for now, I think it's very important that we at least plan for that. And the reason we need to plan for that is, if we wanna add personnel in a given year, I'm not comfortable with trying to train four or five additional officers, that, that is the absolute maximum that we can take on. I mean, each recruit requires four different FTOs through our step process, how it's laid out. And that, that process is very, very lengthy, and it's very demanding on the FTOs, you can only ask them to train so much for so long. But with that said, I mean, we still want the most quality policeman we can put on the streets, we just don't wanna put policemen out there. I mean, culturally, we've, we've really worked hard to change the organization, and we wanna keep that on track, and, and you, you have to train that, they, they have to learn that, they have to understand that. Now, a certified, if we could hire a certified guy, we can cut that training drastically, they don't have to go to the academy, we don't have the academy expense, and, and depending on their level and where they're at, you could be looking at a six week, it's just, now we gotta teach you how to police at the Burlington Police Department, we don't have to teach you how to police. And that's, that's a drastic difference. And so, it's kinda another reason we're doing some experimental things, which this weekend, we're holding a test, and we've always, regional tests, we'll probably continue to do that, but we separated it out a little bit, and just trying, and, and I got another phone call, we got up to three certified applicants right now. You know, where will those turn out? I don't know. I mean, I don't know, I'm not gonna make any guarantees, but in our regional testing, we don't hardly ever have one. And the reason being is, is we have a very difficult time attracting somebody to Burlington from a comparable city. They don't have to go to the academy, we don't have the academy expense, and, and depending on their level and where they're at, you could be looking at a six-week. It's just now, we gotta teach you how to police at the Burlington Police Department. We don't have to teach you how to police. And that's, that's a drastic difference. And so, and it's kinda another reason we're doing some experimental things, which this weekend, we're holding a test. And we've always regional tests, we'll probably continue to do that, but we separated it out a little bit, and just trying. And, and I got another phone call, we got up to three certified applicants right now. You know, where will those turn out? I don't know. I mean, I don't know, I'm not gonna make any guarantees, but in our regional testing, we don't hardly ever have one. And the reason being is, is we have a very difficult time attracting somebody to Burlington from a comparable city. So, our attraction is to the Fort Madison's, the Kilkux, the Mount Pleasance. We can attract some of that, just based on the equipment we have, the size of our department, the command structure in the department, the wages, the benefits, we can attract some of that. So, I've had numerous people over the years at regional testing say, chief, I would love to try to come test for your department, but I can't test in front of my chief. I'm loyal to the organization, I'm just not comfortable doing that. I understand, I get it. And so, we're gonna have a test that is just our test, and, and I do think it's, it's made a difference. We don't hardly ever have a certified guy, and now I have at least three trying. So, I think that that has helped us a little bit in trying to attract certified people. 'Cause this timeline really starts to change if you can employ some certified people. So, that's the goal, but as we work diligently to diversify the department, you gotta keep that in mind, 'cause the odds of us attracting a minority candidate that's already a certified peace officer is slim to none. So, keep that in mind as we go through this process. So, then we'll move into the FY eighteen schedule, and we have one planned retirement there. And at that point, once we get the training done, and FY seventeen moving into eighteen, once that's done, we could then do that position reassignment to CID. We would have our squads filled, which that's our number-one priority, and we could reassign then to CID. But in FY eighteen, you'll notice that, that includes adding two officers as part of this proposal. In FY eighteen, to add two officers, and we would replace a retirement, and we would reassign one. So, that's in addition to. And FY nineteen scheduled, for now, we don't have any scheduled retirements or replacements, and this schedule lays out adding two in nineteen. So, two in eighteen, two in nineteen, we have two scheduled retirements in twenty, and then again, add two sworn. So, that's kinda the schedule to put us to where we would have seven on a squad, a reassignment to CID, and two in overlap, two in an overlap shift. Okay? So, let's talk about the cost a little bit. What would it cost us to do that? And I took an average wage of eighty thousand dollars. I mean, new hires don't cost us that much, but certified guys would probably cost us that or more. So, I just did my best to figure out what would kinda the average be for a wage. And I think we're pretty close at that eighty thousand dollar mark. And clear at the back of your proposal, if you kinda wanna flip back and forth, you can kinda see where these expenses come from. So, two new officers, training and equipment. I tried to, at that very back sheet, I tried to drill this down, this is absolutely as close as I could get it, clear down to even our pre-hiring expenses and what that costs us, and the academy expense, and the FTO expense. An FTO that's training a recruit gets a bump in pay while they're retrain, while they are training that recruit. So, I also included that expense. And then they got their clothing and equipment. And then when you get down to the squad car, that grand total of sixty-four thousand dollars, I didn't know how to break that out, that's a little bit skewed, because you would only need one car per two people. Does that kinda make sense? That forty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty, I mean, if you were only talking about one guy, you wouldn't even need that car, but if you bring on two guys, you would need the car. I didn't really know how to spell that out. The only other way I could've did it instead of forty-five, two fifty is just divided that by two. So, instead of being sixty-four thousand, it's closer to that, whatever, probably fifty thousand. So, that really gives you an idea of where that training and equipment expense comes from, and then the, the marked car. And then if we reassign somebody to CID, we would have to add a car to the CID fleet. And then I broke it out for FY nineteen using those same figures. I included escalators with everything but the wages. I mean, I know they'll be getting raises, but it still won't be up to the eighty thousand dollars if they're not certified. But by the end of year three, some of them would be at that, or a little above, but some of them wouldn't. So, keep in mind, again, those, those are averages. And so then, for the three-year plan, your investment would be seven fifty-seven, three forty-nine, as close as I can get it. And then you, you would have to talk about, we'd be remiss to talk about what would our ongoing costs be? If we, if we stopped the plan there, what would it cost us to, to go on? Well, the cars fall into the five-year rotation, so instead of replacing three, you're probably replacing four. The, most of this equipment lasts for years and years, but, you know, you're gonna have your wages that you're gonna have to pay for six patrolmen. And I think Mr. Frenault and I discussed this at the staff meeting, and I, I wanted to say it was around that six hundred thousand, five eighty to six hundred to backloaded that we keep this thing. That would be your every-year annual increase. If that makes sense. And I know we're throwing a ton of information and a ton of numbers, and I tried to break it into matrices as best I could to, to understand it. And I'm gonna repeat myself, but keep in mind, this is a proposal, this is a plan. And, and I think I made it very clear in my narrative section that I understand the obligation to be fiscally responsible as well. I fully understand that. So, the plan is laid out, it can be altered to add none, to add more, to add one, to, I'll just change the matrix and then, but what I do wanna do is put a plan in place, so we know what we're doing, not this year, not next year, but in the years to come.
I think looking at multiple years, it's a prudent thing to do. I also think with the new facility, by the way, that's gonna help recruiting a little bit, I would think.
It will, it absolutely will, we're really excited about that. That is gonna definitely help.
Yeah.
No question. Good point, great point.
Thank you very much.
If you were to, to hire experienced officers, like say those three officers worked out, would you be able to speed this hiring process up on the other officers?
Yeah, yeah, no doubt. I mean, I think then we could, we could move into nineteen, and you could actually do some more work in nineteen than I have planned out. Yeah, unequivocally. That, that would make a tremendous difference in what we could bring on, and the pace we could bring them on. But again, another reason the schedule's kinda broke out is, is by cost. I mean, if you look, the first year, two sixty-four, two forty-five, two forty-seven. But, I mean, it, it's kinda twofold, Councilman. I mean, in the, in the, the thought of cost and how many we can train. But you bring up a very valid point. I mean, if, if they're certified, we could take on, we could definitely take on more personnel at once.
Besides addressing the, the crime issues, would this then give the department the opportunity to address more of the nuisances, and more of the traffic control, and those other things that I, that I personally feel are, are getting out of hand, because we have to focus so much time on calls for service? And that, I, I, I think the other, personally, I feel that the, the nuisances, illegal parking, the speeding, the running stop signs, the, and, and that sort of thing promotes other crime.
Agreed.
Would, would we, would, would this allow you to pick up more of that type of policing?
It would give us the ability to at least assign some of it. I mean, it would give us that ability, it would still be very much prioritized. In other words, if we're still ticking up on these things I've described to you, that's where the personnel's gonna go. But as that starts to level and get under control, I mean, as a priority, absolutely. You could def- what, you would have somebody that you could assign if, if you had the time. And it, and this would add time, no question. But again, I think our first priority, our first focus has to be make people feel safe. But, but you bring up some valid points, I'm a firm believer that the little things lead to big things.
A lot of, a lot of folks that I've talked to absolutely support the additional officers. They're not only supporting, they're almost pointing demanding. They're, they're saying you need to get in there, and you need to find a way to get more officers on board. And these are some of those people that you talk that, that are from neighborhoods that don't have a lot of calls for service.
Right.
But are experiencing those, those more nuisance calls of the people parking on the wrong side of the street, or placing items in the, in the right of way that shouldn't be there, that, and again, some of that's the, nuisance department itself would have to take care of. But I'm talking about law enforcement-type nuisances. And, and that, that's important to them too. The crime is important to them too.
Sure.
But they're a little, a little bit distant from that because of the neighborhoods that they live in, and that they haven't experienced at firsthand.
Yeah, and I think over the course of time, you have a little bit of a mentality shift. When you start to have time to do those things, the mentality starts to switch a little bit, that I don't have to go take five calls for service, and that car's parked the wrong way, I'm gonna pull over and do something about it, versus driving on by. You know, I, I do think there would be a mentality switch over time. And that'd be something that, to be on a hundred percent honest with you, is our shift commanders. That's something that we would have to instill into the organization, that as we have time, we need to make this a priority. Where now, we don't have that time.
You don't, you just don't have the time now.
Right. But, but, I mean, almost culturally, that's something that, that would have to take place over time. I mean, I, I do firmly believe that as, as you have time available, you can start to address some of that.
Good, thank you.
Very good presentation, appreciate all the information.
Thank you.
All we have to do is figure it out.
Yeah, and I've, and again, I'm repeating myself, but I fully understand it. I think the department has been a, a very, has, has played a major role in turning this ship around. I mean, I really believe that. We have did everything we can to toe the line. And in the budget this year alone, I mean, without the additions, if you take a hard look at, at some of the expenses I showed you, and go back and drill down into your budget sheets, you'll see that the only thing that got increased were things that I know, utilities, you know, certain things are gonna go up a little bit, but you won't see anything else in there. You'll see the license, the capital items, the license plate reader, the parking vehicle, those things. But when you go through that contractual part of that budget and the commodities, you won't see it. And, and we've tried to do that, I know, for five years now, and that's important to us. 'Cause we understand that if we get more, somebody gets less, and that, that's a tough thing to go home and deal with. And we understand the pie's only so big at the Burlington Police Department. We get that.
I do wanna say, since we've started this, uh, look at, taking a deep look at our budget, I, I don't say, I think every department has really been trying to, uh, do a good job with that, so.
Absolutely.
As well as the Police Department. Do you guys have anything else for the, the other questions for the chief?
I don't, but I wanna thank you, chief. You know, I appreciate you guys.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much. If you do have any questions, I know this is a tremendous amount, email me, call me, sit down with me, whatever. I'll do whatever it takes.
I'm sure you'll be getting emails and calls and whatnot.
Well, I get those every day. That's okay, that's what I'm there for. You're welcome.
Thanks for coming down, thanks for the presentation. Say, manager, you got anything?
One thing I just have you thinking about as you, you haven't really talked yet about priorities, and, and I don't know where you're gonna be doing that, but your Safer Grant has an unbudgeted cost, and this consideration of, of staggering on these six positions between the two of them, what that would add cost-wise over the next few years in FY eighteen, it'd be about three hundred and twenty thousand. FY nineteen, four hundred and seventy thousand. FY twenty, right around nine hundred thousand. And FY twenty-one, one point one million of annual costs that are above what we currently have in the, in our operating budget. And as you're thinking through what you're doing, how are you gonna afford that? Whether you're looking at, are you talking about eliminating other things? Are you talking about increasing revenues to cover it? And somehow, you're gonna have to come to some level of compromise as to, is this, are these the plans of action you're wanting to do for changes, and if so, how are you gonna make it work? And how are you gonna be able to communicate that to the public to, to make sure that they understand what's going on too?
That's gonna be the tough part. This is the easy part, listening to the presentations, so.
Yes.
Thank you for bringing that up, and I'll put it right back on your lap. I hope you come back to us with some recommendations on how we're going to fund this, because I, I'm hearing from my fellow council members, maybe not out, not, not strongly yet, but they're also concerned about our public safety in, in the public safety departments, as well as the other departments. There's some, uh, other requests being, being made that I think have some validity and need. And we gotta find a way to, a way to fund those that, that are the, the least painful. And I, but I've, I've heard from at least two of the council members that they're not going to accept a, a property tax increase. So, now, now, here's the impossible, figure it out for us. You don't have to answer today.
You, well, I, you have, if, uh, right now, fifty-five percent of your budget is emergency services. Uh, the majority of the rest of that is, well, a lot of it's, um, public, public works.
Right.
Um, what mo- a good chunk of that is already supported by, uh, transfers in from other, other funds to cover. You can cut your administrative overhead, that's certainly an option for what you wanna do. You can cut nuisance ins- or building inspections. You can cut the library, you can cut recreational programming, you can cut the auditorium. Those, those are about the, the only areas that you have. Your recreation is gonna be fairly difficult. Within recreation, you have, your parks are, are there. And you are either gonna have to shutter a park, quit mowing a park, uh, quit maintaining your trees in the right of way.
That was nice, I liked the way you laid that out.
Um, I, you can, uh, limit your rental inspection program. You can limit the nuisance inspections that are going on with it. The, I don't know how, prioritization of the different things that you have out there are a matter of public policy. And these are, those are the, kinda the options that you have for different areas that you can look at to make tu- cuts. Revenue increases in other areas, there are very few options that are available. But you can mull on, mull on what you wanna potentially think about as, as the next couple of weeks go by.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, 'cause I wrote myself a note this afternoon. How are we gonna pay for this? What are we gonna do to pay for it?
I was going through the budget book at home this afternoon. I know exactly what you're saying, 'cause I looked at it, and I thought, wow, I mean, there aren't just a lot of big areas there that just...
Most of those things you just mentioned are nickel and dime compared to the...
It's true.
To the million four, or whatever number it is, you know?
And I, I had somebody stop me, and they said, well, hey, are, you're gonna get new police officers? I said, well, we can, we can do all kinds of things. I said, you know, it, it comes down to what, what ultimately the, the citizens say. I said, but it's all give and take, again. I said, you know, I said, they said, we, I think we need, this is what the person said, I think we need eight new officers, and we need six new firemen, and you guys need to make that happen. I said, well, again, we can make that happen, but your taxes will get raised. The person completely changed, well, I don't want my taxes raised. I said, well, you gotta figure out then. I said, this is, this is where we're at. I said, you gotta figure out what, what you're gonna be willing to give up to have these things, or to raise taxes, because we don't live in, in magical Burlington where we magically make things, these things happen. We, we've gotta make the, the, you know, the, the fat hit the meat, you know what I'm saying? And, and bring it all together. So, I'm just saying, I, I'd like to bring this, bring this up again. I've received very many emails, and I'm really surprised, because it seems like every year, this is the first year of budget season that I haven't received a bunch of emails with people making suggestions. So, again, as we move forward, I would, I would encourage you to get your suggestions out there if you have ideas on what you want, because it's just not, you just don't go insane. We want eight police officers, and we want six firemen, make it happen. There's consequences, there's a, there's a, uh, there's a way that we have to do that to make that happen, and that's gonna cost money, or it's gonna cost getting rid of, uh, services that we already have. So, um, those are the things that we're thinking about, those are the things that are, uh, keeping me up at night. I sleep like a baby, you know? But, but those are the things that we have to consider. Those are the things that, if you're, if you're wanting to be a part of this process, you need to consider as well as you send the information into us, the emails into us.
But the decision is ours.
There you go, that's where they pay us the big bucks.
When you say you sleep...
So, sorry.
When you say you sleep like a baby, does that mean you wake up every two hours crying?
With my, with my thumb in the back, and the fetal position with my thumb, rocking back and forth, you know, brushing my hair. Stop, Jim.
Well, I, I'm just, I, I'm just going to mention this as one, one food for thought, and there's, there's... And there's, and I'll wait for the other options that I think we have until we've heard from all the presentations.
You need to hear from everybody.
Absolutely. But I, but there's one that's very glaring that I think needs to be addressed. And that's the fact that we've got a building that we're losing $400,000 a year on.
Absolutely.
And that, I'm at the point of thinking it's absolute foolishness that the five of us have allowed it to go on that long. And when I say the five of us, I mean any five that's been setting up here. And that, there's probably, if the recommendation to shutter that building were to come, there would be some pushback. But I'm not afraid to make that recommendation at this point. And if we can, if we can fund, if we can fund a third of what the cost is going to be, the 1.1 million dollars with the $400,000 of money that we're flushing down the toilet right now, then we've got one fourth, one third of our issue taken, our money issue taken care of for funding those positions.
I'm very aware of that point.
And I'm glad we brought this out on the table, because now people in the audience will see that, hey, that's a possibility. We better think about what we're doing here.
I'll be, I'll be a little more clear. The Memorial Auditorium is the building that's costing us about $400,000 a year. And there's a, there's a likelihood that I'm gonna, not a likelihood, I'm absolutely going to put that on as a recommendation to quit letting that steal money from us.
I'm glad you're doing that. We can blame you, but I'll vote for it.
I've got broad shoulders.
No, we've already talked about that, son of a...
I think, it's a good thing you brought it up. I, but I will say this, I won't say shame on us, because that's a big deal. You just don't, you just don't shut down a building like the auditorium just like that. It is a big deal. And once we, once we pull the trigger on something like that, it's, it's, can't bring it back. You can't bring those rocks and all that, that history back. So I think it's a big deal. That being said, we said this before, we'll leave no stone unturned. We're gonna do what we've gotta do to try to make this work, but it's gonna come with a cost. And yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, because that very well could be a casualty in this if we're gonna try to make this work and that's what the citizens say. Go ahead.
As we brought, as we brought forward, mentioning where our contract is with Venue Works, part of making sure that there was an understanding of where our contract was with them was to, so that you could have this kind of a context if this discussion came up. At the, as of July 1st, June 30th, we are at a point where we can end that, our current contract if, if so, if we so choose, as long as we provide 120-day notice. We're not under any timeframe that we have to do it exactly on a given time. But any, any time beyond that date, we're at a spot where we can, can do that if we were to desire to do so. I tried to give you some context in my opening notes about us operating the center versus what's happening with Venue Works. It was cheaper with us, but not tremendously cheaper. We do get better shows in there now. We don't have as many weddings. If you're looking at a significant change shuttering the facility, having a vacant facility down there would not be what we typically probably wanna see happen. If you were going down that road, what that would probably envision was looking for, probably asking, going out and looking for redevelopment opportunities for that site. And seeing if you can't get some proposals to come in.
Right. That would be my idea. You know what, though? You know, we're coming down into Don's 12 minutes here. We probably oughta get him up here.
We could keep talking.
Don said that he would match for each of his two departments, the chief's time. So that gives him three and a half hours.
Because Don's committed.
Are you ready?
That's my suggestion.
Sounds good. Yes, sir. You betcha, you betcha.
We look forward to your coming up.
I do wanna say that this thing should be changed and have a shelf on it for a water bottle.
That's a good point.
Have a tank will sit next to it.
It's a doggone shame. We've let it go this little thing.
How much would that cost?
I'll have my people build it if you're all right.
Oh, hey, there's a deal.
We got, we got two of them here, then. The batteries are out.
We're in trouble. 20.8 million gallons per day. Actual fiscal 50, 60, 21.4 million gallons per day. Why do we have overflows?
Now, Eric, would you, why don't I just tell you the...
Next.
Okay. Okay, we'll see how this goes. Okay, we're gonna go through the wastewater treatment facility first. Some of the slides will look familiar to what you had last year. That's an aerial of it. What does the wastewater treatment facility cover? Well, our span and responsibilities include operating and maintaining the treatment plant. There's 15 lift stations throughout the city that we main, operate and maintain. We monitor and manage the operation of the equalization tanks. Those are the two tanks that are currently out on the Hawkeye separated sanitary sewer system. As they continue with the separation in the city, it's probable that there'll be some additional tanks included in the collection system. And we have radio communication with those tanks and we gather information and data from them.
Is that working?
And we manipulate them sometimes.
Are they working like they're supposed to?
Yes. We also have a laboratory at the wastewater treatment plant. We have NPDS permit requirements for sampling at various locations in the plant, including the plant effluent. And we perform the analysis there. We also have small facilities out in the community or outside our community that bring samples to us and ask us to analyze them for them. We do that. We have an industrial pretreatment program that's been approved by the state. We have eight industries in the program. And we have reports that come to us on a monthly basis from those industries, as well as we do three surveillance samplings a year at each of the industries. We also do the de-watering and the land applying of the biosolids, which is the byproduct of wastewater treatment. Next slide. Current design for the facility is a 20.8 million gallons per day peak flow rate. The average wet weather design is 10.85 million gallons a day. The fiscal year 15, 16, actual numbers, we did have a day where we had a peak flow rate of 21.4 million gallons a day, which is slightly higher than what the design was, is for. But you can typically do that for short periods of time. The maximum amount of water we took through the plant in 15, 16 was 18.2 million gallons in one day. And the least amount of water we took through the plant in one day was 3.2 million gallons. So you can see between 3.2 and 18.2 that we get infiltration, we get inflow, groundwater, rain. Some of our system is still combined, and so we get that water. But even from the separated system, the Hawkeye, we get extra water during wet weather. So as we separate, we're still have issues with water getting into the system. The average 24-hour total during that year was 5.6 million gallons a day. Next slide. The current design for the organic fraction of the effluent, 9,100 pounds of BOD. In fiscal year 15, 16, the actual average was 6,600 pounds of BOD per day. Next slide. So where does the wastewater treatment facility get its revenue? And we get portions of the sewer fee that's paid on people's water bill. Next line, slide. The wastewater treatment facility is basically broken up into two parts. One is the administration and the other is the plant operation and maintenance. The administration has a prefix in the budget of 5401. In 5401, we have two full-time personnel, administrative personnel, myself and my coworker in the office. We have contractual services at the 500 series. I wanted to point out that 529, which is, what is 529? I've got that written down here. 529 is miscellaneous technical services. That's where we pay for the services provided by the waterworks in the preparation and the mailing and receiving payment on bills for sewers, storm sewer, and also we have trash on the water bill as well. That two-thirds is that City Hall takes the total bill received for billing services from the waterworks and divides it into three parts. Two of the three parts is charged against the wastewater and the administration portion of the budget. So that line item in 529, that's two-thirds of the service cost to the city for the waterworks doing the billing. Another line item I wanted to point out was 581, local contributions. That's where we make payments to West Burlington for sewer services to a few houses that are within the city limits that are sewered to West Burlington rather than to us because of topography, location relative to the city's collection system. Next slide. Then there's also in the 5401, there's 1.7 million dollars total in transfers out in the 900 series. Those numbers are something that City Hall puts in the budget that I'm not really germane to exactly what those things are.
So your debt service transfer would cover the GO bonds for capital improvements that have occurred in the past? Your expense transfers is a num, I think it's 500,000 in the budget? I'm going off of memory. What's, what's on that line?
I don't have that in front of me.
That is going over to miscellaneous sewer rehab.
Oh, yes, it is 500,000.
To cover just miscellaneous projects that are gonna come up during the course of the year, such as a washout that occurred this last fall. Or another one, putting in a new sewer line to service a depot facility is another project that's, that's had to come out of it. We've had a couple other projects that have been paid for from that fund as well. The administrative transfer is going over to the general fund. It's designed to support general fund and to cover the costs for all of the services that the administration does towards meeting their needs, covering, making sure that we do the budgets, the hiring and firing, et cetera.
Firing, huh? Let's move on to the next slide.
Depends on how long that takes tonight.
Expenditures. Now, we're going over to the prefix of 5402. That's for the facility O and M portion of the budget. In personnel in the 400 series, there are budgeted 15 full-time and one part-time. One of the full-time person, personnel is an open position, is full-time, a mom, maintenance and operation mechanic, range 12. And what I'm looking to do is I wanna upgrade, rather than filling it, refilling it as a mom, I wanna upgrade it from a range 12 to a 14. That will reduce the number of moms that we current, we would have for positions we have from three down to two. And I wanna increase one electrician to two electricians, which would be a difference of about $1,810 in salary. Now, the reason I wanna do that is because we have a lot, a lot, a lot of electrical equipment. After a lot of soul searching and consideration, I think we're kinda shorthanded on the electrical side. We have one electrician. He's been there for many years. He's got a lot of experience. He's still learning. If something were to happen to him, if he were to leave, we would lose a lot of experience and a lot of knowledge. We do have a lot of electrical work. And we've had basically a man assigned to him 80% of the time. And that's been a wastewater maintenance mechanic position, which takes away from our wastewater maintenance mechanic duties. And we're falling behind in the wastewater maintenance mechanic, but also the electrical part, too. We're just not getting the preventive maintenance work done that needs to be done. So for me, now, the most prudent thing to do is to upgrade the range 12 to a 14. I'd like to do that this, yet this fiscal year that we're in. That position has been open this entire fiscal year. We haven't been spending any money towards that position. So certainly, we could absorb the additional cost to go on from the 12 to 14 for the rest of the fiscal year. And then we would cost us that 1810 next fiscal year. Could very well be, next year at this same time, I'll be back and I'll say I need some more mechanical help. But I definitely need an electrician, and that's the decision from within the department. Next line, or next slide. Contractual services, I wanted to point out 511, which is consulting professional services. That money there is basically for private lab work that we do send out samples to private labs to do analysis for us that we just don't have the capability or the time to do. And that also has the money for the audit that the city gets done on an annual or semi-annual basis. 519, other professional services. That has $400,000 in it, more than what I expected. I suspect, is that H.R. Green Maslow in there? Do you know?
400,000? That's probably the storm, that's either for, it's, it's H.R. Green, but I think it might be the master plan thrown in.
Okay. Certainly, that's...
And that's really a ballpark figure. We've looked at, I mean, until we go through the process and get some, some numbers, that's, we've seen other places that have been, I've looked at other master plans. Costs have ranged from 250,000 to a million dollars, depending on how much you're asking them to do, what size town you're in.
The rest of the money in that 519 is some contingency money. We do get aid on our electrical periodically from contractors. There's something called arc flash requirement. It requires special tools, in some cases, special clothing, depending upon the panel you're working on that we do not have. And so we do periodically ask for help from an outside source. 573, buildings and building equipment. The exterior of the building down there, I know most people just drive by up on Main Street. They look down and it looks pretty decent. But if you get up close, you can see that it needs some work if we're gonna try to re, well, actually restore its integrity. But it definitely needs work, and we have $45,000 towards that repair. And that is just for the headworks. That's the north building. In the CIP, we have some money later on, two years, I think, from now for the south end of the plant. Let's see, next slide.
Before you switch there on the audit, Stephanie, do you, is it 50% of the audit costs you put over here or is it a smaller percentage?
It was $8,000.
So that's like 20%? A third, a third.
Okay, the next slide is 622 chemicals. That's a fairly sized, good-sized number in the budget. That's chemicals for various purposes. We use chemicals in the collection system to treat fog, which fat, oil and greases, as well as odor treatment. We also use chemicals for conditioning and de-watering our biosolids, disinfection of the treated wastewater using the chlorine gas, and then also lab chemicals. Next slide. There's the 700 series, capital outlay. Line item number 739, which is other, in that particular line item, we have a new staircase for the Market Street Lift Stations wet well. It's a very, very corrosive atmosphere. We've tried to maintain it off and on throughout the years. That staircase has been there since 1982. It's reached a point where additional further work on it is getting to the point where it just needs to be replaced. So we have $70,000 in that, that's in the budget in 739 for that. And we're also replacing two of four wet well gates that are in the process. 742 is for operating equipment. In the CIP, for, if you were to look at the CIP for the current year, we had 29,600... In the CIP, for, if you were to look at the CIP for the current year, we had $29,600 for an emergency power generator, and we were intending on locating that at one of our 15 lift stations. And then the next year, in 2018, we were going to spend another $31,000 and put a stationary generator at another lift station. That seems to be the trend when we go to our seminars and that, of putting emergency powers, state generators at lift stations. We've talked about it more in-house, and we think it would be more prudent for us to, rather than spending that amount of money on something that may or may not ever be used, we'd be better off to buy a trailer-mounted generator that we could move if we had a problem at that station. We could park it there and leave it there. If it was a citywide problem, it'd give us one more trailer-mounted generator to drive from station to station. Our stations are set up since Y2K, that we can put and plug in a portable generator, throw a switch, and we can provide power from a portable generator. And so, the stations are all set for that. We feel the money would be better spent buying an additional trailer-mounted generator. So that's why, that's there at 60,000 in 742. And then also, we have a cooling tower. The administration HVAC system's been there since 82. We've done repairs on the cooling tower. We're getting to the point where we think it needs to be replaced. Next slide. This is the capital improvement list for 2018. All those items have been discussed, other than the two that are highlighted in orange, the concrete roadway, which is an annual recurring cost, doing concrete roadway work at the plant. And then the other one is for anaerobic digester. There are three mixers. It's recommended that once every so often, you remove them, ship them, have them reconditioned, and then reinstall them. We only require two to completely mix the digester. When they designed the system, I wanted to have a spare so we could pull one. And so, that is the cost for one. And then the next fiscal year, capital item, we're going to do another one and a third one. Next slide. Next slide. Significant issues. That slide hasn't changed from last year, although I did change the wording of the first line there, where it says, reduce nutrients to surface waters. And the reason I changed the wording from plant effluent, reducing the nutrients in the plant effluent, to just simply reduce nutrients is because City Manager mentioned last time that there were some efforts being pursued to try to create a credit-type program, where maybe you could build a wetlands out there someplace. Is that right?
Although, we have no idea whether that, what'll end up happening on that side. What we do know is, in your current, your current five-year NPDES permit, you're required to measure and monitor the amount of nutrients.
Right.
Nitrites and phosphates in your effluent.
Right.
And develop some, and then model what it would take, take to do, use best available technology, cost-competitive technology.
Right.
Cost-effective technology to try to reduce that and what it could be reduced to.
We, you approved in agreement with H.R. Green here, within the last four weeks, that authorized us to engage them in doing an analysis of the treatment plant, to see what technologies, what means could be used to help reduce the nutrients in the plant effluent. That report is required, as stated by the NPDES permit that we have. That report's due to the state in June 1st of 2018.
The state hasn't figured out what they're going to be doing to folks yet with this.
Yeah.
They've started to implement this a little bit, and it's meant a little bit different things for the communities that have, that had it. If you were to look through your league magazines, I think a couple of months back, there was an article that highlighted a couple of communities that have had that report come back and some of the things that they've been asked to do. But as, we won't know what they're going to ask us to do until after we submit that report. And it would most likely be the next NPDES permit, where they would have some language in there saying what we would be required to do.
Right.
As we plan for that, that we have to look at what the landscape is, as to what they allow us to do, whether it's our effluent, or if they allow us to do some alternative methods to reduce nitrates and phosphates.
Other significant issues, odors, of course. And as we continue to separate, odors could become more of an issue. We did have money in the CIP, I think it was last year's CIP, for $500,000 for an air scrubber that was intended for the south end of the plant. We didn't know for sure when we went through the 2010 improvements, which went online in December of 2012, whether those improvements were going to create an odor issue or not at the south end of the plant. And so, we put money in the CIP as a contingency, just in case. Thus far, we have not had any issues. So we're past that period. In the CIP, you'll see there's, I think, 400 and, I don't know, is this 25, 50, 75,000, a couple of years out?
I think it's up by 21.
For the north end of the plant, as we continue to separate the sewers, the wastewater coming to the facility is, well, as I pointed out, that 3.2 million gallon for low flow, the dry weather flow is going to get lower and lower and lower because they're going to be, eliminate sources of inflow, and perhaps sump pumps and things like that. And of course, then the water's going to take longer to get to the wastewater plant, and so it may have more odors associated with it. And so, we have some money as a contingency to deal with that, if that comes up. Then we have flood mitigation, everybody knows about that. And then, last year, I spoke about the available storage for biosolids. We really have been utilizing the Rutherford Building. That agreement is continuing, but it could end at any time. If we were to get an industry that would create significantly more solids to the plant, then we could see our biosolids generation go up, and then we would find ourselves short on storage space. So that's an issue, too. Next slide. I get calls periodically from David Toyer, asking me about how much space we have at the wastewater plant. He's having inquiries from anonymous industries who are looking for places to locate. So here, it mentions the 2010 plant improvements, which cost us $6.2 million. The current design limits are 10.85 million gallons per day, average wet weather, and 9,100 pounds of BOD. The current loading at the plant's approximately 75%. Next slide. So when they designed the facility, improvements, they highlighted, and I shared this with the council back in May of 2011, the amount of space we're creating by doing the improvements. There was an industry called DeBecker. Some of you may remember that. They were going to discharge us up to 1,500 pounds per day. At that time, we would not have been able to handle that 1,500. They initially said 500, and then they went to 1,500. So when the design was done, it was designed around that scenario. And so, we have 1,500 pounds for industrial-type contributor. They have 425 pounds of BOD for residential needs till 2030. That 425 pounds is equivalent to a population equivalent of like 2,500 people. 425 pounds would accommodate about 2,500 growth in population. And then there was 175 pounds per day that was just kind of a contingency or buffer. Next slide. So the total proposed budget for the fiscal year 18, the administration and the facility, 5402 added together, along with the 900 transfers, is $5.07 million. Okay, that concludes, moving to the next slide. I don't know if you want to, or in 3% increase? That's the last slide. That's our proposed increase for the sewer fee that appears on the water bill. Is that also applied to the stormwater fee as well?
Yes, it does.
3%? Okay. So if you have any questions? If not, I'll continue on to solid waste. 23 minutes, that's too long.
I talked some.
Solid waste.
Take your time, Don.
Okay, solid waste. There we are. There's a garbage can, and there's a recycling bin. So that's what we're going to be talking about. Go to the next slide, please. So the fee that is paid for on the water bill, the trash fee, it's paying for basic service. That's the weekly collection of a 33-gallon container, up to 50 pounds. That fee also covers the seven-week program we run in the fall, picking up leaves. It covers the three-week program we pick up in the spring. It does, covers the citywide cleanup program. It also allows our customers, with proof of having paid the trash bill to the city, they can self-haul wood waste to the landfill, up to eight inches in diameter, and take that material in and get rid of it without getting their wallet out to pay for anything. Next slide. That basic fee also pays for the recycling program services that the city has. We contract with the Des Moines County Area Recyclers. If you're familiar with the recycling program, it's curbside collection only, even if your garbage is picked up in the alley. It's every other week. They do have a 24/7 drop-off at their facility on West Burlington Avenue. They also process the recyclables that are collected and sell them. They have education services that go out to industries, to municipalities, to schools, to educate them on opportunities. And they also operate the household hazardous chemical program facility at the landfill. So your basic fee you're paying covers all those services. Next slide. So where's our revenue come from? Well, we have the trash fee that's on the water bill, and we estimate we have approximately 9,650 customers that are paying that fee. We also have revenue from the sale of trash tags. The city sells to the retailer a trash tag at $1.95. Most of the retailers that I know of sell them for $2 to the citizen. We also have a nominal amount of money that comes in from dumpster permits that are paid by commercial haulers, if they're going to locate their dumpster in the city right away. It should have a permit that's taped to it, and they pay various fees for the length of time they intend to leave it there. Next slide.
Trash tags here, listed in your, on this page, it says $220,000 worth of trash tags. That seems like a huge number.
About 10,000 of that is from me.
We, based on the number of trash tags, on average, that are sold according to the finance department on a weekly basis, and figuring 9,650 households, we figure then better than 80% of our customers on any given week are not exceeding the 133-gallon can. But the other 20% or less, such as the city manager, are using one, two, maybe sometimes three trash tags.
Or four.
A week. And it's a very expensive program for those people.
Yeah.
Very expensive. Okay, so expenditures. 400 series, we have six full-time people and one part-time, one part-time meaning no more than 29 hours per week. We have contractual services, which are the 500 series. This, again, the prefix is 5301, and then the 500 series. We have 519, temporary labor, that's where we use contract labor to help us out when we feel we need it. We definitely use them during our programs, the LEAF program, and the citywide cleanup program. We have used them in other times when we've had to deal with shortage of personnel due to injuries, extended sick leave. 524, that's a very large number. That is the line item that we use to pay for our landfill tipping fees, which of course would include the household garbage, the people who self-haul brush and get, don't have to take their wallet out of their pocket. We provide service and go out and pick up TVs, appliances, and tires, and stuff like that. And then we ultimately take it to the landfill or to the recycling center, and they bill us like they would a homeowner if they were bringing, taking it there themselves. So that gets paid out of that line item. And then also, the recycling fee, the recycling service fee, which at the upcoming rate would, with the 9,650 customers, so much per household, it totals $422,670. So that line item of that $422,670 is paid out to the Des Moines County Area Recyclers. 529, that's the other third of the cost of the charge the city by the waterworks for billing services and collecting money and managing the accounts that way. Next certain line. Commodities, 600, and I can say anything about that. Capital outlay, 700 series. That's usually trucks, that type of thing. And transfers out, there's that 900 series, again, that is managed by City Hall.
So yeah, debt service transfers. We had had a couple of trucks that were purchased prior, prior to, well, 2011, I think, was the last issue where there was a garbage truck purchased. We weren't, we're just using the debt service levy to pay this. There was a decision by council two years ago to start doing a transfer from solid waste to cover that, to relieve pressure on the debt service levy and allow that to be used to cover other projects instead. That was at the same timeframe where the tag fee was increased from $1.50 per tag to $2 to accommodate that, that change. The other administrative transfer is comparable to what we saw out of the sewer fund to the general fund to cover for administrative services.
Next slide. Ah, falling asleep, huh? Okay. I better improve my presentation. Capital improvements. I apologize to City Manager, Finance Director, or title. That orange new truck, Packer, that's in the fiscal year for 17. It was approved by the council to purchase one this year. I have not gotten that done, and those trucks take nine months to get. So that's going to fall into the next fiscal year. It will not be this year. It can be ordered, but it won't be done because, well, it just won't be done. Our fleet size is seven trucks. Our oldest truck is 19 years. Our newest truck is a year and a half. Our average age is nine and a half years, median age 10. And at the replacement rate, the cycle that we follow, it's, should be, every 14 years a truck gets replaced. Next slide. Okay, significant issues. I think that we missed some slides or something.
Did you want to pause your time?
Ha, ha.
Pause his time, please, Don.
Funny, 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 funny.
We don't want you to go over. Pause his time, Eric, would you? Good thing we have a sense of humor.
Yeah.
And cookies.
You know, you really ought to put a water fountain up here, so I don't have to hold this bottle. And it would enable me to talk a lot more without getting dry.
See how he changed it up? First, he said a cup holder, now he wants a water fountain. Never ends.
Okay, no, that's right. All right. Significant issues. I use that word very carefully, program-related wear and tear, physical and stress on the workers. We have six full-time and one part-time. The type of program we have would dictate the type of wear and tear that those people go through. And it could be addressed many different ways, but it's all going to cost more money. I'm just making that statement, is that, let's go to the next slide. Okay, so in fiscal year 1516, they picked up 6,084 tons, and that excludes the leaves in the citywide cleanup, which we do bring in contract labor to help us during those programs. And sometimes, they're used other times. That would average out to 117 tons per week. And you divide that by five days, that would figure out to 23.4 tons per day. You divide that by seven men, the six full-time and the one part-time. That means each man, on average, would be picking up 3.3 tons per man, per day. And it's an asterisk because we don't always have seven men here, there. So when there's only six men, or there's only five men, then, of course, the tonnage goes up. As part of the stress issue, if someone gets hurt, they know their absence can cause problems for the other guys. If a guy's on vacation and someone gets sick, well, they know that that'll take it down. And yes, we... And yes, we've used contract labor to try to handle shortages of manpower. But finding manpower through contract is not an easy thing. They've had difficult times getting, and on short notice, it's next to impossible to bring people in. Now, I mentioned about the recyclables. During that fiscal year, for that four hundred thousand dollars, they picked up six hundred and sixteen tons of recyclables. Recycling is a very, very expensive program, but it's also a somewhat popular program and it's environmentally conscientious. And I believe it does have a place, but I just want you to know, it's a very expensive program. Okay, next slide. Okay, so here's a slide that has kinda like the history of the trash fee that's paid on the water bill. And one thing you need to be aware of is when you pay your water bill trash fee, that's not just for the trash service only, that's also covering recycling. So it's broken down into two parts. Seven twelve, that's July of 2012, the basic fee for trash services was eight ninety-five and then it was three fifteen for recycling, so you were paying twelve dollars and ten cents a month on your water bill. Now, if you look at the asterisk, it's there because it was just prior to that asterisk that our city manager arrived. And he seen the condition of our fund recommended to the city council. And in October of 2012, we increased the rate by ninety cents. And then subsequently, seven thirteen rolled around, the recycling, the Des Moines County Solid Waste Commission increased recycling fee by ten cents. So you can see, it went up from three fifteen to three twenty-five. But we did not increase the, we did not increase the thirteen dollars. And from October through the fiscal year of 2013 or 2014, it stayed thirteen dollars. Anyway, at the far right, seven sixteen, that's what their people are currently paying for the basic fee for trash, it's ten dollars and twenty cents. Three dollars and fifty-five cents a month for the recycling services. So the total fee per month right now is thirteen dollars and seventy-five cents. Next slide. We're proposing an increase to the trash fee, the fee that's paid on the water bill of twenty-five cents per month. Fifteen cents of that goes against the garbage program and the leaves and everything else. Ten cents goes towards the recycling services. Next slide. So the proposed trash fee on the water bill, your basic service is ten thirty-five a month for trash and everything else that goes along with it, along with the recycling services is three sixty-five a month. So your total monthly fee is fourteen dollars. Most residents are billed on a quarterly basis, so you multiply that by three and what they're gonna see on their water bill is forty-two dollars. Okay, next slide. The tag, that's been in place since nineteen ninety-four, nineteen ninety-five, somewhere in that neighborhood. It was ninety-five, I guess, it was one dollar for a trash tag. And you can see when it was increased, the last time it was increased was in July first of 2014 to two dollars and we're not proposing an increase to the cost of the tag. Thank you very much. Next slide. Okay, so trash tag is used for that extra bag or can of trash or multiples. It's also, we use it to collect bulky items outside of the citywide cleanup program. People have called us more, it seems like this past fiscal year than prior years, but we advertise that and it's on the city's website that if you have a bulky item, you can call us, make an appointment, put tags on it and it gets used for that purpose. The last three are things that people, like a computer monitor, well, why not take it to the landfill, to the hazardous, the household hazardous, the facility out there? And if they did that, they would pay, that can't be right, seven dollars cash and we would charge six tags. Let's see, that's six tags would be twelve, oh, that'd be right.
A TV's more than a TV.
Twelve dollars. It's certainly small enough, but it takes time to drive out there. It takes gas. You gotta stand in line or sit in line, maybe because of vehicles. We have to take it out there and when we take it out there, they're gonna charge us seven bucks. So we charge six tags or twelve dollars. So we charge them five dollars to pick it up and ultimately take it out. Now, do we run every single one out there individually? No, we wait till we get a truckload. But we charge for those services because it costs us money to do that too. Same thing for the appliances and same thing for the TVs. Next slide. So solid waste. That's a fee that people pay for the basic service and then we collect revenue for the extra trash. And we also, people are paying for the contracted recycling services. The total proposed budget for fiscal year eighteen, which appears before you, is one point seven two million dollars. Next slide.
Solid waste questions?
Questions. Sixteen and a half, it's not bad.
Is there anybody from the audience that has any solid waste questions?
Why does he spend more than cheap?
Because he's solid waste, man.
You know, there's really not much to my programs. I mean, it's pretty straightforward. What floats, floats. What sinks, sinks. And what stinks, stinks. And wastewater, if it's going downhill, it's perfect.
That's what I'm talking about.
And garbage collection. You shouldn't have brought that up.
He did. But Don answered, my friend. Good, Don answered.
Way to go, Don. Anything else?
Do you guys have any other questions for Don?
What doesn't thank you, they can call me.
I have no questions.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you, Don.
That's a great closeout. Do you guys have anything from that table?
Just a couple of things. Couple of things for perspective. Backfill, I did wanna mention, just a reminder, backfill is four hundred thousand dollars, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars total that we receive from the state. So that's one that we continue to watch and monitor and just see what happens as time goes on and whether they honor that. But if there's ever a spot where backfill were not to be provided to us, that's another thing that we have, will have to address within our budget somehow. And the perspective, as you talk about whether to do property tax or not versus some of these different programs, a dollar change in a levy, each dollar of the levy is about seven hundred thousand dollars of revenue. So kinda the equivalent of what you're talking about when fully implemented for six positions in each of those two departments is about a buck fifty levy increase if you were to try to do it all on that side.
About what?
A buck fifty. That is, that is a dramatic change in structure. And when you're also thinking, that's where, as I think through the risks on what happens with backfill, that's something that needs to be kept in that perspective too and what kinda hit that might be as you're talking about what kind of cuts to potentially have to try to address some of these staffing issues. That is part of that perspective as we watch the legislature and see how they address their budgets at the state level. Other than that, I hope everyone has a good night. We have another meeting on Monday night and that will be at three thirty. That's not, that'll be the same time as these other budget meetings, it's not a regularly scheduled work session. And that will be the fire department and Derek. So that's it.
Okay. Where we go? Do you have anything? Do you have anything?
Go Hawks.
Nothing at this time.
Okay, good night. We'll see you back on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Oh, thanks for the cookies.